Okay, and we'll right along to our second item. Incidentally, just to reconfirm, this is to the audience that may be listening or watching, this is a work-study session and our point is here is not to make decisions but to give guidance to staff as to direction they might take on the items that are before us in this work-study session, which is what we've just accomplished on the number one item, the bond 2019. And now the Old Town Scottsdale parking and our presenter of course is Randy Grant, our Planning and Development Services Director. And, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Good evening, Maryland and Council Brian Cluff, Senior Planner with the...
Sorry about that, Brian, but yes, it's good to have you both here, thank you.
Brian has been instrumental in a number of the larger projects in downtown. He's been very helpful, as is Dan Worth in putting this presentation together. It looks like a lot of slides and it covers a lot of materials. I promised to get you through as expeditiously as possible, but this is a very complex topic and as you know, a lot of people have a great deal of interest in it, so I don't want to shortchange the information. The policies that we've used for decades in guiding downtown parking management in Old Town are, first of all, the presumption of maintaining free parking. Periodically that comes up, but we always reaffirm the principle that free parking is valuable. Second is to provide options for small property owners to be able to reinvest in their property without making parking a deal killer. In other words, to provide them options with which they can acquire parking if they're not able to provide it on their lot, particularly on small lot situations. The third is to bring more people to downtown to support businesses. I mean, that's kind of a primary function of everything we do is to promote the vitality of the business owners downtown. Fourth is to promote the efficient use of parking, recognizing that it is an increasingly expensive and valuable resource, so we want to make full use of it when we have it available. Next is to provide adequate public parking within an acceptable walking distance. Obviously, what is acceptable varies from individual to individual, but we'll talk about that in a few moments as well. Next, to acknowledge that parking needs in downtown exist and to anticipate future needs, neither excessively over-parking or under-parking in the downtown. Space is a problem and space that is used up by parking is not space that can be used for business purposes, so we need to manage it accordingly. And finally, to acknowledge that special events and circumstances such as spring training, special events, Canal Convergence, Art Fest, are going to create some parking shortages in some areas. One of the planning principles that we always use in looking at new developments is you don't park for the day after Thanksgiving. If you do, you end up with a lot of spaces that are not used 364 days a year. So we want to manage those spaces so that by and large, they're fully utilized and there is adequate space, but not that we have spaces sitting empty for most of the year. Building on past plans and studies, this goes from 1984, when the downtown plan was first adopted, to the Walker Parking Study in 2015 and to the downtown plan update in 2018. We've used all of those resources and information to prepare the program for this evening and to look forward into the future. Tonight's presentation is going to be in four parts. The first is a historical perspective. We're going to talk about some of the things that got us where we are today, and those include improvement district lots, where public lots are located, how much parking there is in them, on-street parking, on-lot parking, P2 and P3 credits, in-lot parking, and the downtown overlay. All of these create an intricate, complex layer of things that you pull on one and it affects the other, but they all contribute to the parking situation in downtown. The second component is looking at parking pedestrians in Old Town. Third is looking at current conditions and fourth is planning for the future. Historical perspective we want to start out with, in the 60s and 70s, there were improvement districts and these were a popular way and common way of providing parking at the time. As a business owner within one of the improvement districts, you bought the spaces that were required for your business. You could also buy at a discounted rate spaces in addition that you could use for expansion in your business and many property owners chose to do so. Those credits run with the lot, they are legal entitlement, and they're in primarily two areas. One is in the 3rd, 5th Avenue area, the surface lot that is currently the parking structure in Craftsman's Court, and in the Main Street area from Indian School down to 2nd. Public parking lots and structures, there are over 30, excuse me, parking lots and structures distributed through Old Town and they total more than 6,600 public parking spaces. You can see from the map that they're distributed in both large and small quantities, the idea being to provide space within a walkable distance, preferably that you park once and walk, but recognizing the size of the downtown, that you're going to need to move around, that you have public parking accessible from all locations. On-street parking was the original downtown parking. Prior to 2005, on-street parking was counted towards the requirements for businesses that fronted onto them. In 2005, the ordinance was changed, actually made it more stringent and required that businesses provide parking, not counting the spaces that were in front of their business, and that was a, an acknowledgement that on-street parking is truly public parking and isn't associated with any particular businesses adjacent to it. Today, there are more than 2,300 on-street parking spaces and we'll look at how those are located. This shows the parking lots and structures, the blue lines are the locations of on-street parking, so you can see a pretty comfortable coverage of all areas of the downtown with possible exception of over by the hospital and they provide their own parking. It's not public, but it is provided for their business. We also have evening and weekend spaces in addition to the daytime spaces that are available, but you see how the 24-hour versus, 24-hour on-street and evening, weekend spaces are distributed. This shows a graphic representation of parking areas that are located on lots. So these are not public spaces and they're not on-street spaces, they're actually parking areas that are located on individual lots and they're significant. On the left is in the 3rd, 5th Avenue area, on the right is in the West Main, Old Main area, and you can see that there are quite a few areas where public parking, or where parking is provided that may not be counted towards public parking. P2 and P3 is a designation that started out in 1972 and it's specific to one particular area of downtown that I'll show you a map of, but the idea was that those lots in that area were small enough and they had alley parking that was designated, usually for each lot, and that between the alley parking, the on-street parking and the public parking that was provided in some lots in the area, that there would be adequate spaces to be able to allow credits for those property owners to claim. And so credits were distributed and those run with the property as well. And as you can see, the area that we're talking about is in the northeast quadrant, Camelback down to 3rd Avenue and along both sides of Drinkwater. The purple areas are the areas that are designated for on-alley parking and those are a zoning designation that can't be changed without the council's approval. And the C2, P3, and C3, P3 are the areas, you know, on which lot credits have been granted. In-lot parking is what many cities use to provide a parking option to property owners that can't provide parking on lot, and it provides them an opportunity to buy in-lot parking, with the theory being that when they buy in-lot parking, that money is taken and then used to provide parking within the area. This was initiated in 1985 to allow reinvestment on properties that simply couldn't meet their own parking needs. At the time, a parking space was valued at $7,500 a space and that was based on what it costs to build surface parking, to acquire the land and build surface parking. With the increased costs and the more limited availability of land, the cost has grown faster than the inflation rate that was set in the ordinance. Currently, a space is almost $14,000 and it costs considerably more than that to build it. So one of the things that we'll be talking about as a potential option for you is to adjust what that level of in-lot parking is. However, I would point out that it has been kind of a last resort for some property owners that couldn't achieve revitalization on their property without being able to pay into that program. There are almost 500 in-lot spaces that have been permanently credited since the program began. From '85 to 2019, $2.9 million was collected through this program. Currently, there is a fund of almost $310,000 in the fund and the funds have been used to provide new parking. Oftentimes, these are euphemistically called phantom parking spaces and that's simply not accurate. It's true that you can't go and define exactly where the parking is, but 300, or 855 spaces have been constructed with in-lot funds and since 1986, 3,200 downtown spaces have been created. That $2.9 million went to the creation of those spaces, so those parking spaces are very real. This shows the distribution of the parking spaces and they include considerable amount that were purchased out of the Nordstrom's parking garage, also that were with the city participated in on the South Bridge project and on the waterfront garage, all of which are public spaces. The downtown overlay was an overlay that was created in 2003 and at the time, there was a need to simplify parking requirements and there was a need to stimulate revitalization, particularly encouraging second-story additions, residential units above retail units. And so the downtown overlay was an option that allowed the addition of up to 2,000 square feet added to a lot without additional parking being required. It also simplified the process of determining public, or the parking requirement for existing properties and it applied to the additions of, additions to existing lots and properties, not to lot assemblages. The next area is talking a little bit about pedestrian access and parking in Old Town. The red dots indicate the location of public parking lots or structures. Just for reference, the distance between the east end of the Scottsdale Mall to the Brown entrance to the Civic Center Mall is about 1,320 feet, about a quarter of a mile, about a six-minute walk. It's also the distance from the east end of Fashion Square to the west end of Fashion Square, and this shows a radius of 1,320 feet around all of those parking structures and lots, so you see a pretty good coverage. Some people would say 1,320 feet or two blocks is a long ways to walk during sometimes of years, so we looked at it a different way. 660 feet is about one block and it's the distance from the front door of City Hall to the main entrance of the Center for Performing Arts, about a three-minute walk. The red areas indicate the radius around that. I would also point out that 660 feet is about the distance from the Nordstrom parking garage to 5th Avenue, south of the Marshall Way Bridge. So, comfortable walking distance. I would agree with people that say it's not comfortable all times of the year, but one of the things that's a principle in our downtown design guidelines is providing shade and covered walkways, street furniture, inviting spaces, wide sidewalks, and other types of visual interest, and when we're successful at doing that, 660 feet is very walkable. Parking in Old Town with 6,600 spaces that are available to the public, 2,361 on-street spaces, there are about 9,000 spaces that are public spaces in Old Town. In addition, there are over 9,000 spaces that are in private parking lots within Old Town. Although these aren't always available to the public, they, they do help to provide parking for employees and patrons of businesses on which those lots are located. So in total, there's about 18,000 parking spaces serving Old Town. That does not include what's north of Camelback and what's south of Osborne. When you include those, there's over 30,000 spaces. The Walker Study in 2015 is the most recent study that we have that looked at parking on the downtown basis. It was focused primarily on the northeast quadrant, but it did validate assumptions in all parts of downtown and it showed that the overall supply of parking downtown is adequate. It also demonstrated that it's not perfectly distributed. And so, the more, the northeast quadrant is the area that gets a lot of attention and has been talked about this evening in terms of being unevenly balanced, and so in the future, when we're looking at providing additional public parking opportunities, this distribution may be one of the criteria that you use to determine where that is placed. Current conditions, now I would, I would not represent this as a scientific study and I know that Mr. Thompson this evening said that this is not the experiences that they live with day-to-day, so these slides are only representing anecdotally my experience on a January day in about, at about 2:00 in the afternoon, looking, just walking through downtown. The Stagebrush Theater and the Lola Millot, the Stagebrush Theater, which is 660 feet south of Main Street, had considerable number of parking spaces available. And I know that one of the concerns is that perhaps it's not well-marked enough and that we need more wayfinding and identification of those areas, but again, it gets to the question of, is there an adequate supply of parking or is it just not, not convenient or easy to find? This shows the parking deck of Civic Center Garage. The left is, is the first deck underneath Brown Street Garage and the, the right is the Rose Garden. The one area that I did find that was fully utilized was the 3rd, 5th Avenue Garage and it, it was full. So this looks at actual space counts during events during last year, and they show that on March 7th, when there was a Giants game and the art walk, there were spaces in all of the parking lots that were counted. On March 9th, with three events, including the farmer's market and Arts Festival, the limited parking supply was primarily at the museum garage. On March 15th, when there was a Giants game, the Civic Center Library Lot was full, and on March 17th, when there was Sunday Art Affair and a Giants game, the Civic Center Garage and the library garage were full. Again, this reinforces that while on special events, there are limited supplies in some locations, there are excess supplies in other locations, and it may be a matter of steering people towards the opportunities that exist. Parking requirements is one thing that we have typically heard about lately and it relates to how many spaces are required for a certain type of development. The ratios are created for different land uses in Scottsdale as they are in most cities and they're usually expressed as one parking space per so many square feet or one parking space per dwelling unit. Parking is based on averages, it is not an exact science. If you get a restaurant that is very trendy and popular, their parking requirement is not going to be adequate. If you get a business where the square footage of the business is not representative of the use that's being in there, the parking may be too high or too low for that particular business. But downtown in particular is, is based on averages and it's based on mixed use, things operating at different times than other things, and sharing the parking that is available between uses that are not operating on the same peak. Parking is required, required parking is intended to accommodate all users, but it is on a mixed-use basis. When you get into the suburban standards, that is, is which each business needs to stand on its own because there are no other options for parking. If you can't park in the lot there, you're parking around an adjacent street. So there is a difference and a distinction between how we calculate parking in downtown and how the ordinance is structured and how it's calculated and structured outside of downtown. Mixed-use time-of-use reductions are allowed when it's demonstrated that there is capacity and a common example is a hotel user, when their parking demand is highest in the evening and overnight. It's not the same parking demand that they have during the day, so rather than having parking sit vacant, which would happen if we designated for only that use, the idea is that we, we can share parking between uses. We want to provide adequate parking, but we also don't want to overbuild parking with the resources that would be required to do so. There are also reductions that are, that are allowed during a parking master plan. Anything over 20% has to come to council, but again, it reflects off-peak uses that are sharing the same parking. Parking management is a critical component to having an adequate parking supply. The shortage of parking, parking often relates to convenience and not supply or availability. Sometimes parking's not well-designated and there can be a perception that it's not available when in fact it is available, it's just not recognized as being available. The management of parking can dramatically affect efficiency. Leasing out parking and designating it for one particular use may prevent the shared use of that parking for other types of uses that may need that parking to meet their need. Signage can help to identify where parking is located. Private parking can also be a factor in providing off-peak parking and perhaps in providing on-peak parking. One of the things that we would like to do is with the changes and the trends that are occurring in parking, to look at some private users in the downtown and see if they may have excess spaces that they provided initially when they opened that are no longer necessary. Perhaps the city could sublease, lease those spaces or provide a contractual arrangement to make them available to other users and we provide the parking without having to build it. Technology can also help identify available parking. We had a recent pilot program where the pucks were, were put under parking spaces and they identified for people that downloaded an app where parking was available. That was successful, it wasn't widely used, so I don't know if it's something that we'll come back to you to talk about expanding, but there are constant changes in technology that may make it much easier to identify where parking is available on a, on a real-time Other cities pretty widely address parking through metered parking and generate revenue and, and manage parking and structured paid parking arrangements. Scottsdale's consistently chosen not to follow that model, but I, I do want to point out because there are often comparisons to what other cities are doing, and this is pretty typical for other cities to, to require payment for parking. Now related to parking requirements, oftentimes we're compared to other Valley cities, so I wanted to make some comparisons and distinctions. All of the Valley cities that we looked at have different parking requirements for downtown and non-downtown area, and again, this reflects the mixed use and shared use of downtowns as opposed to more suburban business applications. Phoenix, Peoria, and Surprise don't have minimum parking requirements in their downtown. Avondale and Gilbert can reduce parking requirements in downtown by up to 50% if it's proven to be adequate. Chandler, Glendale, Mesa, and Tempe have discretion to establish parking requirements at the time the mixed-use development is approved. Some cities that are in this survey are, are generating revenue from downtown parking, so they are selling you the parking and they would prefer that businesses don't provide it on an individual basis and they would, therefore you would buy it from them, but that is a comparison with other cities. All Valley cities have lower parking requirements for hotels than Scottsdale does. Currently, our requirement is 1.25 spaces per room. It has been demonstrated that with ride-sharing services, that's way over what is necessary, so we've been coming to you with some hotels that are in the .8 or .9 range per room. The 1.25 includes provision for employee restaurant parking and, and conference facilities that are typically associated with, on smaller applications, not a destination restaurant, not a large conference facility, but the 1.25 accommodated a combination of those things. If we lower that parking requirement, we may, we may want to look at what it takes to combine the per count, per-room count, key count for parking and also to accommodate the other peripheral uses. Chandler and Gilbert have higher parking requirements for call centers than they do for other types of professional offices. The call center is obviously where you put a large number of people in a small space and parking requirement increases. All have similar requirements for retail uses. Most of the cities that we looked at do require some type of guest parking for multifamily and Gilbert and Glendale have the same requirement, multifamily at Scottsdale. Others do require more parking for multifamily uses. Trends in parking, there has been an unbelievably dramatic increase in the use of ride-sharing, Uber and Lyft services. It's kind of transformed the rental car and the hotel industry in terms of how they operate. Autonomous vehicles will change parking patterns. There are changes in transportation preferences, particularly for millennials that are choosing other types of, of transportation. They're making decisions on, on things other than purchase of cars. Not to say that everybody's going to give up their car, I don't think that's realistic, but I think these trends are representative of what's happening nationally and will affect parking trends in Scottsdale. Some cities, as I indicated, are eliminating parking minimums. That's not typical, but it is occurring. This shows you a representation of the change in ride-sharing versus taxis and rental cars. It's gone up 837% in three years. People are simply not traveling the way they used to. And the impact, particularly for hotels, is when somebody is not renting a car at the airport, they're not parking it at the hotel. They're coming to the hotel, they're being dropped off, when they want to go somewhere else, they're taking the same ride-share or they're taking a taxi or perhaps they're renting a car at the hotel and they're traveling based on the availability of that and not on a rental car opportunity as they have in the past. There's also a variation in vehicle ownership rates. It's not hugely significant, but again, we're talking about trends that might play out over 15 or 20 years and we're seeing that the vehicle ownership rates in Old Town condos, for example, are much less than they are in Paradise Valley or Desert Mountain. Again, you can't paint too broad a picture with this, but it is a representation of a change that is occurring. We talked a little bit about hotel parking, so I won't go into this. Experienced Scottsdale did a survey and 44% of the guests park at the hotel, 89% only need one space for two or three rooms. We're seeing this perhaps more, a more rapid change in this than other types of, of transportation options, but parking is changing. Trends in residential parking, car, car sharing is increasing in popularity. Apartment leasing in Scottsdale is at 95% and there's very little indication that, that parking is deterring lease rates or occupancy rates in, in, which in Scottsdale are among the highest in the Valley. Generally, what we hear from people that are proposing this is they know what they need in terms of providing parking for their users. If their users are not satisfied, they can't lease the rooms. If they can't lease the apartments, they don't make money. So they're depending on the 95% occupancy rate and having a consistent lease rate among the highest in the Valley. As we plan for tomorrow, a number of things that are probably self-evident, but we shouldn't plan for tomorrow using only yesterday's assumptions and technology. Change is going to happen. We may not be able to predict exactly what it is, but we know change is going to happen. We should plan with an emphasis on flexibility and should have the willingness and ability to adapt to changing conditions. One thing that Dan Worth has proposed is that when we look at designing parking structures in the future, we should look at floor-to-ceiling heights that reflect the ability to convert those to some other type of use if in the future, they're no longer needed for parking structures. Current parking structures in most cities can't be converted because the floor-to-ceiling height simply doesn't allow it, and so that would be something that would cost us more initially, but would pay off in the long run if we ever do have to convert that to a different use, rather than just tear down a parking facility that's no longer needed. And again, we need to balance costs with community expectations, not providing either too much or too little parking. Some enhancements for you to consider, and I'm getting very close to the end, please bear with me. We could look at modifying the in-lot program. If the council desires, we can charge the market rate for what it costs to build parking. That will significantly deter people from being able to use that option if, if they need it to revitalize their property. We can look at amending the parking requirements in the zoning ordinance going forward. We can enhance wayfinding and, and make availability of parking more apparent to people that are looking for it. We can form strategic partnerships with the We can form strategic partnerships with the private sector to more fully utilize the spaces that they have available, rather than building additional public parking. We can look at the management of parking. Maybe we increase the number of spaces that are two- to three-hour limited. We look at temporary parking for special events. We can look at valet or other ride-sharing alternatives to meet peak demand during events. We could look at paid versus freed parking. I don't think we will, but it is an option. We could look at increasing the data that we have. The 2015 parking study is now five years old, and things move rapidly, so if you chose to direct us to do a study to look at parking availability and also to confirm the trends that might affect us in the future, we'd be happy to do that. And of course, we can build more public parking, and the bond demonstrated that the voters have suggested that that's appropriate. So certainly one of the things that we want to consider. That's the end of the presentation that we have, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Randy. Appreciate that. And to add some questions, yes, Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for that bureaucratic analysis, Randy. That was amazing.
You're very welcome.
Holy cow. I'll just get right to business. I'm looking for what we had on the petition, and everybody can go back to the petition later, but number one was the update of the downtown overlay parking requirement. Specifically with following requirements, mixed use in multifamily dwellings must require 1.5 onsite parking spaces for one bedroom, two spaces for two bedrooms, and one space for each additional. Guest parking must be required at the rate of one onsite space per every four residential units. Hotel lodging facilities must include additional parking for employees. Hotel lodging employees must park onsite. Hotel lodging facilities that include dining areas must include additional parking. Hotel facilities that include assembly areas, like a conference room, must include additional parking at the rate of one space for 50 square feet. And number five, which is add at least one full level to the stagecoach parking lot. And historical town, add at least one full level to the existing farmer's market parking lot. And also, I would like to see us raise the In-Lu parking fee, and we can remove or we can modify the requirement for remodeling to a certain percentage, so it's not an over some burden to those, so they're not going to say, "Well, I can't do it, because now it's $45,000 space." Well, if you're only adding 500 square feet or you're just remodeling, you shouldn't have to buy another space. So I think we can adjust that. And I believe in utilizing technology and apps to locate parking spaces. I don't think we've done enough in that area. And I like Mr. Worth's idea of the adaptive garages, that we do build a garage, maybe we can use it for something else later in 2050 or something when people don't drive anymore. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? Mr. Grant?
I've got a couple, then. I'll just say that, I guess, I'm going to first ask a couple of questions, and I think that one of the concerns that I've had, we've talked about the trends, and of course, our entire policy for downtown has been a live, work, and thrive environment for a new generation who 30% of them don't get their driver's license, and of course, they oftentimes don't own a car, and that seems to be indicated in some of your stats. The Uber, Lyft, it's no longer a phenomenon, but as it develops and grows into more and more extensive use, particularly on a vacation situation, and the idea of renting a car and then parking it at a fee, sitting there, not used. We must be experiencing, or I should say, some of our hotels are experiencing the reality of that, and I'm wondering if that's not quantifiable, if we can really get some sense of that, or if that's already included in some of your statistics and considerations here. So, and one other, well, there's several others, but another thing was the, I think we have had at least one occasion where a builder has built their parking structure to accommodate the shift, when it's completely realized. Am I mistaken in that, or was that with the?
There have been proposals that have provided structured parking as part of their requirement.
But that was suitable for, to be converted, if in fact it wasn't any longer going to be used for parking, into office space?
Could be, Mayor. I'm not familiar with that, but it could all be.
Yeah, I've heard that a number of times. I don't know if it was just suggested or considered, because there was a strong belief that the movement was going to continue to sort of make those parking garages not absolutely obsolete, but certainly in the numbers that are being proposed. You made a statement that, or in your PowerPoint presentation, that the parking requirement in comparison to the benchmark cities was at least exceeded by at least 25% the other cities in the benchmark. How high was that differential to go? If that's the least, the 25% excess over other cities in the benchmark, how high did that actually go? Or is that an average rather than the least?
I believe that was related to hotels, where we're at 1.25, and the highest requirement for other Valley cities is one space per key. So we're 25% over what they were requiring.
So the highest?
Yes.
What you're suggesting with that statement, though, that there are others that don't even require the one?
Correct. And most of the cities have the potential to reduce the requirement when it can be demonstrated, and hotels are now doing that.
You know, we have one other thing, that we have some private parking arrangements that are made, I think specifically about the church on the east side of Miller Oil PH's parking lot. It's a large surface parking lot that is generally sold during spring training season. I don't know exactly if it's at capacity each and every time or what, but it's probably at least as convenient as most of the other options that are available, and it's fairly substantial. Does that figure anywhere in the equation of peak need?
Mayor, that does figure in.
And others, I should say.
Takes a lot of, a lot of the capacity for spring training games are provided in lots such as that. And I think that can be something that we can look at for accommodating special events that have a higher peak that's not replicated during days that don't have spring training games or art fests.
And of course, you run the risk, of course, that those are not always going to be available either, but they may coincide with a shifting in driving and car parking requirements. I would have to say that I agree, not that it's hard for me necessarily, but I agree with Councilman Phillips, in that I think that some of the things that you've suggested, I think are front and foremost as to what we really need to make sure we're doing, doing this in a thoughtful way. There's significant evidence that the devaluation of a downtown goes hand-in-hand with increasing requirements for parking, when in fact it's not utilized or when it's not needed. And so that pulls people away from our market. And maybe some would just assume that happened, I don't know, but nevertheless, that is of concern. Just a note, our Channel 11 is running a historical film, I don't know, maybe some of us have seen it, with former Mayor Herb Drinkwater in his later days, and he talked about the need to revitalize downtown Scottsdale in the mid-'80s, and what their efforts were as far as that's concerned, in bringing population and bringing people to downtown, and how important it was. But parking was an issue then to accommodate what they would want to do in expanding. So I think we've been through a couple of cycles, maybe even through then, but nevertheless, it's an interesting report to watch. So if anybody wants to link to that, I'll be happy to supply it, and get it from this Channel 11 as well. So I very much, personally, I very much appreciate what you've done here, and I'm not signing off for the group here, but I do think this is a very calculated and very comprehensive look at this. I suppose the primary thing is whether or not some combination of these things can be implemented to ease the pressure and/or to change it. And we're talking about, as Mr. Pejman said, the future, and some of the projections we're talking about for the future may influence what we're thinking now we need for the future. Because we're already at a point, and we can demonstrate by your stats, that we've already seen some of that. We don't know what else is going to change. But forcing anyone with property that has to have a component for parking, and you know, and I'm going to, before I finish that sentence, I wanted to say, you said something too about our comparison, and a number of cities, at least three, it seemed to me a surprise, Peoria, maybe it was Phoenix, don't have any requirement. And I mean, I can tell you, I've struggled in downtown Phoenix on a number of occasions, so I'm not sure how it's working, well, it's working for them, but for the people that are down there, as a matter of routine, I suppose it's working well. The one component that makes us different from Phoenix is our desire to make sure that our businesses in downtown have a componentry that's not taken up by our now sort of reinvigorated new economy with the companies that are here with workforce during the day. So I think a primary thing that we've been trying to face off with for some time, and when we added one or two decks to the Galleria Corporate Center, was it one or two decks on top of these, is it two? Yeah. That was a direction toward that. I don't know, I never heard whether that eased anything, or, you know, and from some of the testimony that was given, it didn't sound like it worked too well. And I realize we're working with private property owner with a private building as to how they allocate their parking spaces, but the other thing that we uncovered is there's got to be some working element with them, if we can, where they had a number of spaces that had been allocated, but they went unused. And if you stroll around in certain areas, as you did with your tour of downtown, I've been down to the art walk on a Thursday night, and to Mr. Thompson's comments, maybe it's directions, whatever else, but if I went to the usual places, the place was packed. Go to the parking garage, and it's a ghost town. There's nobody down there. And so that's been the place of, I almost cautious to release that information, because I may lose that available parking, but nevertheless, it's that, and I think as one of your pictures illustrated, certainly the parking lot over by the theater, the surface parking. It's not that much further away than a lot of things, and certainly it's better than driving around. But in any case, a couple of those components, I think, are really important, and I think the corporate one, even though that might be the toughest one, is to see if there's not some way. Permits in the garage, and maybe something else that was offered up, I'm sorry, by one of the others who gave some testimony on that. But the one thing we do not want to do is either force this on someone in a very costly experiment as far as increasing space without really exploring utilization of what we have, and I think you've demonstrated that well by statistics and also by observation. So I'm thankful for what you've given us. Yes, Councilwoman Clapp?
On your slide on Valley comparison, that Mayor was talking about it too, you had a line on there that says, "Most Valley cities require guest parking for multifamily projects." And I would like to, not this moment, but at some point, you can give it to me privately, I'd like to know more about what the other Valley cities do. Because if they're providing for parking for multifamily, guest parking, then how much is it? I mean, is there some number you can give me for city by city, so we can kind of see how they're allowing for the guest parking? Because I think that's a, I believe that's one of the biggest issues, is guest parking all over downtown. And so multifamily projects, I believe, should have some requirement. I don't know what that requirement should be, but some requirement for guests to be able to park and visit the tenants in the multifamily project. And that's also something that I think the hotels also should be providing. Some do, some don't. And so in those instances where there is a hotel that has no guest parking, and I can think of one that's real close to here, that I went to a few months ago for a breakfast meeting, and I pulled up to the front, and they said, "We don't have," because I said, "Where's your parking?" He said, "Well, we don't have any." And he said, "Well, you got a parking garage?" I said, "Yeah, you can pay for the, whatever the two, three, or four-hour rate was, and you can park in a parking garage, you can park on the street." So I drove around and found a parking place two, three blocks away, and I kept thinking about that, and that, you know, we're hearing that hotels are experiencing less requirement for cars in the garage because of Uber, so many of them probably have spaces in there that aren't being used. So why don't they provide a, if nothing else, a voucher? When a guest pulls up and says, "I want to go to your restaurant for breakfast, I'm meeting someone," that, you know, here, you can have a voucher and go in the parking garage for two hours in order to meet someone. I mean, I think there needs to be some flexibility here among the hotels. If they're asking for reduced parking requirements because of the Uber effect, then could they then, if in some cases existing hotels that are already here, might have parking sitting there available that could be used for guest parking? And then, of course, for new hotels, I think there should be some guest parking requirements, because people go and visit those hotels, and where are they going to park? So as we're building many hotels here in the area over the next few years, I think guest parking for both multifamily and hotels is something to look at. And then I noticed on the picture that you did of a couple of pictures downtown where there was no parking at Main Street, or wherever that was, was that Main Street? It's 1:45 in the afternoon. So if you're going to take a picture, parking needs, don't do it in the middle of the afternoon for a retail area, because that's the time when nobody comes to retail. So my opinion is on Main Street or that area, take your parking, take your pictures and look at the parking at 11:30 or 12, when people are going to lunch, because that's restaurant time. And there are many restaurants that have plenty of parking until between 11:30 and 1:30. And then retailers, in my experience, see their customers come during lunch hour, so if they're not going to a restaurant, they're going to a retail location during lunch hour, and then it's dead for about two, three hours, and then around 5, they start coming out, they're getting off of work, and they're going to the businesses. So 5 o'clock or later is then when the parking pressure is again on those businesses, not at 1:45 in the afternoon. And then I don't know when those pictures were taken in those parking garages. Was it taken at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, or 5, or noon, or whatever? So I really do believe that there needs to be a better analysis of the parking situation at different times during the day, and not just possibly at times when everybody agrees there are times when there are empty spaces, and there are times when there are not. And I hear from a number of people who want to come downtown to go to their favorite restaurant for lunch, and they say, "I cannot find a parking place for lunch." And so if we want to encourage restaurants to be downtown, then we got to consider that. There was another comment I wanted to make. You showed a lot of land, private land, space, small spaces, private land that have parking on them, but we know that the properties in downtown are being sold and resold these days for things, other development, and so we need to take in consideration that some of those private parking spaces are going to go away, because whatever's going to replace them is probably going to take, not have as much parking available. And the reason I bring this up is that when restaurants, for example, contract for valet parking, they usually go to a private person and say, "Can I rent some of that land for my valet parking?" Well, if that land goes away, then they have a problem in finding a place to put their valet parking. And I've heard this in several instances from restaurant owners in the downtown area, specifically some that are there along First Avenue, and some on Main Street, too, that, you know, if they're using valet parking, they're very afraid of, as land gets sold off, their private parking agreements for valet are going to go away. And so this is a future problem, not necessarily today, but I think that's part of the reason why the business owners and merchants have talked about the future, is they're concerned about, you know, as these properties get converted or renovated or redeveloped, that new uses come in that take away whatever available parking is there, or it might be a hotel that has no guest parking requirements, or it might be multifamily that doesn't have guest parking requirements, and that means that more and more of the parking places are going to be taken up by whatever that new development is. So with that, I would say that- new development is. So with that, I would say that most all of the suggestions you make here in the end, I would agree with pursuing, with the exception of parking meters. I wouldn't do that. But other than that, I think everything else that you have on here about modifying, possibly modifying, you'd have to take a look at what that would be. And definitely increase the wayfinding. People do not know where parking spaces are. I looked at that Parker app that's been available, but it's not real user friendly. So, you know, it does tell you where parking lots are, but it's not very good. And I mean, there's probably better apps today, so that they know. But if there's, I know we have very strict signage requirements, but if there's some way to let people know that there's a parking area nearby, I would suspect most people don't even know those lots are down there by the museum. They have no idea that they could park there. And then strategic partnerships with the private sector, I think that's excellent idea. I think having more time limitations in certain areas, so that, you know, that people don't take the parking for all day long is, is appropriate. But if we do that, then I know we have to have more monitoring. It, it, it does no good to have increased time limitations on parking and then nobody checks it. And that's what I've heard from people, is that I watch it, that, you know, they see that there's two or three hour parking in a certain place, but nobody ever drives by and checks it. So those people who work downtown are very savvy and know exactly where they can park, in order to be able to keep their parking place all day long. And then data collection, I would encourage another parking study, 2015 was a long time ago. And lots have changed. Lots of new development in downtown. So I think a new parking study would be appropriate. I think this is really old data we're looking at from the last study. And, and we've already talked about needing more public parking, we just got to decide where, where it needs to go. But in the retail business, people will not walk very far to a store. If you have the parking too far from them, they will not go to your store. They'll go somewhere else where the parking is more available, because there's too many choices. And so that's, that's part of the critical nature of, of the merchants that are downtown, is they need to have the parking as close to them as possible, in order to make sure that their customers will actually come to them, and not drive around one time, give up, and go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Whitehead?
Thank you. I think that that was an incredibly thorough report, and combined with the citizens who also did a tremendous amount of research. I felt like I, I have a lot of information. And I, I just want to say thank you to both parties. I really appreciated everybody really doing a lot of homework. So I, I agree with a lot of what was said, but I just want to summarize what I see. I see an immediate problem, and that's at the Galleria. And I think that just has to be resolved. I, I don't think we just define our parking, future parking, based on the problems we're having at the Galleria. We solve the Galleria. And in addition, on Main Street, if we're having people that shouldn't be parking in front of the galleries, I agree, we want, if you're a retailer, you want people to just pull up in front of your store and go in. So again, I just think the immediate problem is to deal with the Galleria and deal with any, and try to amend at Main Street too. If the wrong people are parking, and they're parking all day in front of Bob's Gallery, let's, let's see if we can find some solutions. Then there's the near term. As Bob, I think all the speakers said, well, Bob and French said that we don't have an immediate, right now, we're, we're kind of okay, except we have these exacerbated locations, Galleria. So we have, you know, we have a few years before we're building car, our garages. And there's a lot we can do. In fact, I don't want to do a parking study until we tap into some of the ideas. You've caught on many of the ideas I had. So near term, we, I think we do need to, I think the problem is the increase in mass, you know, the tremendous increase in residential. So I do think that we should be reviewing residential code, and, and definitely adding, considering guest parking. I think that's what I would want. The call center, that was really interesting, that Chandler makes, wouldn't that have solved Galleria? If you have a call center, maybe we need to have more parking for call centers. And also workforce parking in hotels. But again, I, and I just want to stress, in looking at this code, the word flexibility kept coming up. I want flexibility. So I, I'd rather not have designated spots, but I wanted to, because if, if at a time, like, it's a nighttime event, there's fewer workers, but there's an increase in guests, you know, we want, we want to use every single parking spot as much as possible, because every parking spot we, that is empty, is just hot concrete that's not doing anybody, and it costs taxpayers money. So just these, efficiency means a lot to me. You mentioned that tapping private spaces, that's what I have been thinking about. Do we have a, do we have an inventory of all private spaces in downtown? Okay, because I definitely think we need to be planning our peak month, March, by using, whether it's the church, or the office building on Indian School and Scottsdale Road, even if we, the city, paid to, to rent their spots for those peak times, we save taxpayers a boatload of money. So I would like to really, I mean, it's the sharing economy. So let's, let's really, and again, we're waiting a couple, three years before we build anything. Let's try to really tap the private spaces. The signage, I also hate to tell everybody, but I park in the garages by myself, because, what about painting the roads, or, you know, with a big P, this way? Something, you know, where you're driving, because you're kind of staring at the road, and you guide people into these parking garages. I think I, I would support raising the in-loop parking. I thought that was a good idea, too. Oh, on the apps, I just want to tell you that my kid, which of course, my kid has an app, but also I've had seven-year-olds pull up their app and show me in their cities, because their cities charge for parking. But they just go, "Okay, here, I'm reserving a spot here, and it's in this, you know, corporate building, and I've just reserved it for an hour." So I, we're not going to charge for parking, but there, you know, if we want to do apps, probably there are a lot of apps that possibly work better than the one we have. I, to me, if you have signs painted on the road, taking people into the garage, that might be better than an app. Then I think, oh, and valet, oh my gosh, I, I, I think that's huge. If we have a public-private partnership, there shall be no valet, in my opinion, because those are taxpayer-funded spots. So I think that's an area we could improve on, on how we disallow valet, valet parking. Then, then I think if we start doing those things at that point, and I'm not opposed to doing a parking study today, but I think at that point, a parking study would be much more helpful to us in planning where we put those new parking garages. So that's kind of how I see it. Thank you for all the work you did, and the citizens too.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Littlefield?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I basically agree with what a lot of folks here said already. Downtown parking is an issue, and we need to get ahead of it now, before it grows into a bigger issue. And the complaints that we hear about now, you know, they concern the foreseeable problems of the future. As we build more and more, double our population down there, build the hotels, build the businesses, we're going to have more and more need for parking. I think the Galleria is a perfect example of that. Now, I think looking at the Galleria would be a very good idea, because I think they are mooching, if you will, taking some of the spots that are supposed to be public, because they don't want to pay for the parking in the Galleria. So that's something that we should be looking at and finding a fix for. If the city council never approves another mega building in our downtown area, the ones that we've already approved are going to demand more and more parking. People drive in here, and I have heard it from day one, that there's not enough parking. It also, if you can't find a parking garage, and you don't know where it is, it doesn't exist. There's no point in building a parking garage that nobody knows where it is, can't find it, can't use it, and, and has no way of looking for it. So I really, really think using apps, losing, painting the road if we have to, you know, maybe signs on the edge of the building saying parking, you know, something like that. But we need to make sure that what we already have is known, can be found, and is usable. An app, maybe that's the way to go. The one that we used didn't work, but that doesn't mean there aren't others out there that we could try and test and see if they do work. I'm all, I'm all for a study. I think we need a parking garage study. And I have to tell you, I believe there is a huge parking problem in our downtown. And, and I'll just give you one example. My husband and I went out to dinner one night downtown. We were dri, we were on a dead stop on the road, because parking was on a dead stop on the road, because there was no place to park. Some idiot pulled out of the line and started heading for us, because he got angry. That's how you kill people. And, and we, we really need to get a handle about the reality of what's down there. Not what we want to have down there, but what really is there. We need to fix this. So I have, I have a number of questions. How much parking will we need? How much is the demand for? How should it be located? Where should it be located? And who's going to pay for it? I think we definitely need to do a study. For question three, we have to put the burden of pain for adequate parking squarely where it belongs to be, and that is on the developers, and the developers of these big projects. The best, and I, I see it, the only way to do that is by increasing the requirements of our parking code. We need to have parking in the code and required by the developers, or that $22 million of taxpayer bond money that is supposed to go to public parking is going to go to the new hotels and multifamily units, and the condos, and the offices that are currently coming before us. And basically, that just becomes a subsidy to the developers. And I do not believe that that is what our voters voted for. I did it a little bit differently on this. I went down through Marilyn Atkinson's petition. Thank you, Marilyn. And I think most of these issues and items require additional study and evaluation. I have a couple of recommendations. First and foremost, add guest parking to our parking code. We need that. We cannot not have it and expect an area that is full of hotels and apartments and rental condos and all of this, not to have guest parking. That, that's a number one priority. People are going to invite their friends over, they're going to have their kids come over and park, they're going to have service people come and, and do stuff, clean the carpets, whatever. So you have to have parking available for that kind of thing. And I, I like Marilyn's suggestion of 1.5 onsite parking spaces for one bedroom, two spaces for two to three bedroom, and one space for each additional bedroom floor or more. There's not going to be very many of those, so I don't think that's a big problem. Guest parking at the rate of one onsite space for every four residential unit. You can change that. You can make it whatever you think is appropriate, but do a study to find out what's real, what's really on the ground, not what's ideal in Glendale, because I don't really care what's ideal in Glendale. For hotels and lodging, employees must park onsite in designated spots. They should know how many employees they're going to have at any one time. Take either an average or the, the most that it would be there at any time, and put it as designated employee parking, so that they don't take the public parking spaces to park, which is what's happening in the Galleria, so that we have a perfect example of that. Item number four, we, we already covered. Five is okay. I think for six and seven, we need to have that included in any kind of a study that we do, because those are issues, I personally, I don't know what the answers are. You know, conference rooms, how many, how many parking spaces are needed for a hotel conference room or, or center? I, I don't know. So we need to find out, and get a reliable current study done. A call center, obviously, we'll need more parking, if there's one that goes in there. What is the determination that should be made on how many parking spaces would be used for that? Number three and number four are both yeses for me, on her little pad there, on her issue. And as far as the in-loop parking, I'm not su, I have mixed feelings about that, because it doesn't seem to be working very well. So if we can make a way for it to work better, then I'm, I'm all ears, I'd like to hear it. But I know people have come to me and said, "You know, I've paid for parking, and I don't get it. I don't have it." So there's a disconnect as to what we're doing, and what the understanding of the people who are paying for this truly is. We need a master plan update. And I think with quite literally thousands of hotel rooms, condos, apartments, and offices coming to our downtown, our current parking ordinance isn't sufficient to handle it. And I have a separate note on some, on one issue, which isn't exactly directly parking, but it is. And that is, if we manage to keep the Rose Garden, I do not want to put it back up for sale. I think it's the only large piece of land the city still owns in downtown. And it could be an open-air park along the canal with parking underneath it. And it could be found, if we do something like that, by people, and it could be utilized, and that in and of itself might make a big difference. So that's just another way of finding parking that people will find to use if we have it down there. And so that's kind of what I was trying to get at. And that's basically, I think, all I have to say. If you can't find it, don't be surprised, nobody uses it. So we definitely need signage for the parking that we have. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cordy?
Thank you, Mayor. So my comments may not be very helpful, but I really want to express my concern about taking an issue of parking outside of a larger conversation. And I think that we should be having a more holistic conversation around our parking needs. And that's really around the lack of our public transportation, the lack of linkages, and providing transportation options for our workforce. If we look at our workforce, we, we import 87% of our workforce every day, and that equates to approximately 35,000 people into our downtown alone. 35,000 people, so extrapolate, you know, even say 80% of those are in cars, so you're looking at 28,000. And those people are parking somewhere. And wouldn't it be great if we could perhaps eliminate 30% of that 28,000, and then that would alleviate, oh gosh, about 4,000 parking spaces for our citizens and for our visitors? So I think that, that this parking issue needs to be in a broader conversation around workforce, around transportation and transportation options. We look at our, we look at the trends, and the trends are pretty specific. There are, there are less driver's license, licenses being issued today. There are fewer people owning cars. There seems to be more flexibility in, in sharing cars, and of course, Uber and Lyft. And I really think that we should be thinking more sustain, sustainability and sustainable community, rather than putting $20 million into a parking garage. I think we need to be looking at resilient solutions, rather than the old guard solutions. Having said that, the, wasn't this information based on a parking study that was, was done last year? Didn't we, didn't we fund a parking study in 2019, 2019?
There was a parking study update by Walker in 2015.
Okay, so there was not a parking, so I thought there was a parking study being done to update, before we had a conversation around this?
There are a lot of parking studies that are done with each development that comes in, but we're not currently doing them.
Okay. Was there any parking study done with that downtown 2.0 study? Was there anything on parking on, when, when we spent so much time on that downtown 2.0 study?
I don't, I don't know.
Because, you know, if you look back at that downtown 2.0 study, you know, it, it doesn't talk about parking, it talks about being pedestrian-friendly and walkable and create talk about parking, it talks about being pedestrian-friendly and walkable and creating shade and benches and creating safe and wide sidewalks to create a more resilient and pedestrian-friendly downtown. And I think that should be all part of that holistic conversation. Having said that, I will, I support the increase in the two-to-three-hour parking limit. That probably aggravates more the employees than anyone else, because they go out and change their spot and go back into a parking spot. Trust me, I was there for many years. I also believe that perhaps we need to have specific Uber/Lift turnouts, so areas where Uber/Lift serves the community, and there could be identifiable areas to catch an Uber/Lift and be safer catching Uber. I think the in-lube parking needs to be modified and increase it so that it really becomes not a viable option. The number of guest parking in multifamily, I think we should be increasing that a little bit, but not significantly, to where we become uncompetitive for investors to build multifamily. And more strategic partnerships, you know, we do have paid parking in Scottsdale. They're private parking lots. I just spent a weekend in downtown Phoenix at a seminar where I had to park overnight, and it would, it cost me $36 a night. People use these paid parking lots, and they don't, you know, that's, that is a, that is, it seems to be a normal thing. In fact, people are surprised when they don't have to pay for parking. And perhaps we need to look at paid parking in that, and look at what other cities are doing with that revenue. So I know that Tempe collects about $150,000, $200,000 a year in their parking revenue, and they invest it back into their downtown. And, you know, maybe that's just something to look at. It's part of that conversation we should have, again, under that holistic umbrella, which is probably, shall we say, not realistic. But I think it needs to be done, and I think the conversation needs to be had in the community around these options, and a community conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, Councilwoman Millhaven?
I will try to be brief. So we just saw a presentation that said our parking is adequate. One of the speakers, Mr. Thompson, said he doesn't see that we have a problem today, but is concerned about the future. So I think that doing a study is a really good idea, especially if it's five years old, seeing what the changing trends are. But I think we have to remember all the things we've already done to support our downtown parking, right? So the Museum Square project parked itself, and then we reduced the price of selling the land to the developer by $7 million for them to build additional public parking to address the concerns of the nearby merchants. And so the project parked itself, and we added more parking as belt and suspenders to address people's concerns. The Southbridge project, whether it happens or not, the deal was that the city gave up close to $2 million in incentive that would have been paid to the city by the developer for the developer to buy, to build additional public parking. Again, belt and suspenders, the project parked itself, merchants were worried it wasn't enough, and so now we're adding more public parking. And there's a $20 million bond project to build public parking. So I think while we can revisit, certainly, I encourage us to revisit, do another parking study, I think we have to remember we've already done a lot to try to address our downtown parking issues when we have studies that tell us the parking is adequate. I would mention one other thing, which is the Galleria, if folks remember, was originally a shopping center. And so the parking requirements for a shopping center is very different from the requirements for an office space, right? I go to the mall, I spend a few hours and I go. It's not we all show up at the same time and spend all day. So the Galleria was a mess in terms of not making it as a shopping center and being converted. Unfortunately, we can't go back after the fact and say, oh, never mind, now you have to provide more parking, because the deal is what it is. The other ironic thing was, is the one thing the parking study did tell us was that that Northeast Quadrant was the least evenly distributed parking, and so maybe there's a chance to do something there. But I certainly, real quick, I'll run through the points. Modify in-lube program. I think we have to be really careful. I think that hurts the little guy, right? So the guy owns a small property, wants to add a little bit on, if we're going to, if we're going to make it really, because the conversation is to make it a lot more expensive, I might be willing to make it less expensive to help the little guy improve his project, but I think we have to be really careful about modifying that program. It's going to hurt the person who owns a smaller parcel. Improve wayfinding, absolutely. Looking for partnerships with the private sector is a good idea. Increasing two- or three-hour parking, I think, is great. Maybe doing some data collection, folks said maybe the app, I was trying to pull the app up on my iPad, but it's on my phone, not on my iPad, but look at that as well. And so, and certainly, I think we should, before we do anything, I think we should update the study and look at what trends are and what they would recommend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just want to add a couple of little things that sort of occurred to me as we were talking about it. And one is that we, I don't know that we figured anything into when we were talking about mass transit. We do have a mass transit system, and I think it serves pretty, downtown particularly, pretty well. This isn't like the airpark where that's a real issue, I mean, as far as the last-mile component that we've talked about for several years now, as far as how to mitigate that. So it'd be nice to know exactly how many of the service employees, or at least get an idea of percentage of service employees that are coming to work versus by way of mass transit, and maybe even multimodal. So I think there's another factor to be considered there. But that's only to go toward a study when we look at how we're addressing this and how maybe the entire transportation system is changing a bit, as, you know, as far as the parking component is concerned. You know, it's interesting, Councilwoman Millhaven just mentioned Galleria, and I think it's really easy for us to forget, but that's exactly what happened. And not only did it go to office, but it also went to a data center, you know, and so, you know, with McKesson, a huge, huge impact. And one of the things, yeah, we can't go back and we can't look at these things necessarily to change them, and frankly, there's little latitude to be able to add on after the fact in some instances. But that's where the two decks came in. And, you know, that was, there were two components to that. One is that by virtue of really no parking problem 10 years ago, I mean, there was parking galore all over the place, but it was dead as a doornail, too. So one of the things was when the W went in and invested, and frankly, in particularly bad times, I think some, somewhere along the line, there was an allowance for the available parking in the Galleria parking garage to supplement what they had. And they were also looking to the forward, that they, they thought most of their patrons were not going to be travelers with cars. So there's a couple of components that maybe got misjudged, but some of that was part of the planning. That's why it's all the more important that we look at every element as best we possibly can in projecting where we're going to be and where we're going before we make a move that's going to cost somebody a lot of money, maybe even make our downtown non-competitive for people coming in, much less to expand small operations. So I'm concerned about the in-lube parking fees and whether we increase it or not. And my concern about that is that I think, as Mr. Pejman said, what we essentially are doing is we are subsidizing parking. We took ownership of parking when we developed this system. I don't think there was anything wrong with the idea and how it's worked for a number of years. But we own it now. You know, it's really our responsibility, and these in-lube parking fees have never paid to the extent that the city has invested in parking garages. So you're really talking about a huge investment on part of the city, and it'd be a nice thing to sort of reconcile it back. Now, and I'm saying this in a kidding sense, I hope that Councilwoman Whitehead will understand when I say this, I'm not into confiscating private property to force the parking on them, and they may make changes later on in any case, so it's not something you can rely upon. But it does serve as an example, when you drive by a parking lot and it says $10 for the day. I'm wondering whether there isn't a component for us to say on some of our parking garages, if we could shift things around a little bit by saying, hey, for this day, and spring training season is a perfect example, we want you to be parking out in front of Bob Pejman's place. No, I'm kidding. But we may be, maybe set up something to charge for parking. I don't know if that violates our ordinance, our code, on a temporary basis, but it may be, it makes sense, because others are, others are doing it. I'm not envying them or otherwise, but it does have, it gives us an added potential distribution element, you know, to move it away. Your terms on it were that a shortage is more a matter of convenience, not, I'm sorry, not, yeah, not availability. You could also say cost is a factor. So if it's convenience, yeah, I got it. If I can park at the curb, nine times out of 10, that's what I'm going to do. It doesn't matter where it is, and I could, I probably would walk that 1,300 feet, you know, if it was more convenient, I was out in the air or whatever the case may be, I could get to see a few things. And the cost may be a factor, too, in some areas. But we don't have a cost factor for free parking. So we have an element that most other communities aren't dealing with. I'm not suggesting it, God help me, I probably won't make it out of the building if I did, but nevertheless, I think that's, it's something we've got to figure into this equation. How do we sort of overcome the idea that free parking is hard to beat? You know, so you're going to go for the convenience, number one, no matter where it happens to be. So that's, that's a couple of things that occurred to me that I think are worth looking at and continuing on with it, too, when we talk about special events. Yeah?
Yeah, and I, when, I believe we can't kill the golden goose, as far as I'm concerned. We have a fabulous downtown, best downtown in the entire valley, and one of the key factors is free parking. You know, we can argue it that you can get money by charging parking, but when you do that, you change the draw that will come downtown. And so the need for maintaining free parking, I think, is pretty high. I say that because I experienced some dabbling with parking in my old hometown decades ago on a thriving Main Street where somebody got the bright idea to put in parking meters and narrow the street and make it brick and make it pretty, and nobody went down there anymore. It totally killed the downtown. And so it was, it was a great-looking street, but nobody liked it. They even made it meandering, which made it even worse, and so...
But they didn't have a parking problem.
They didn't have a parking problem after that. And then they decided, oh, God, we've done the wrong thing, so they tore out the parking meters, maybe five years later, but by that time, nobody would come back. And it's still that. It's still a fairly dead downtown. So I remember that for many, many years of how it took a great, thriving area and just made it so easy for all the suburban shopping centers to suck up all the customers, because they all had free parking. And we can't forget that shopping centers have free parking. So if you come downtown, you should expect to have the same parking accommodation that you get at a shopping center. And also, as far as looking at this as a big picture, I'm not really wanting to go back and revisit the transportation master plan on this. I think that we need to be dealing with parking issue and not try to draw it into whether or not we need to have other transit, mass transit, or whatever in downtown. I believe that the parking situation stands on its own. We've made decisions in the transportation master plan that we're working with today on how we structure our transit system, and I don't believe we need to be changing it. We need to look at the situation as it is today, not start trying to do too many things that's going to mess up the downtown, like narrowing streets and, you know, going one way on one street and one on another. That's the other thing my hometown did. Not only did they do that, then they had one street going one way and one street going the other. It just totally confused people, and they left and went to the shopping center. So I believe we have such a great downtown, it's why we have such a parking problem. People want to come down here, and in my estimation, we just need to look at this information you provided to us, which has got a wealth of information in it, and understand that we're told we have adequate parking, because we're relying on a 2015 parking study. We need to know what is reality today, because the people that are doing business down here, and some of us who go down there say, there's a parking problem, we need to fix it. So that's my final comments related to this, but I, I know we've given you a whole lot of things to consider and do here, and hopefully, we can, in the final analysis, when all this is done, we can figure out, figure out the best place to put that new parking that's going to be paid for by the bond project. So, thank you.
You know, I kidded about it, but I wasn't really suggesting parking meters. But I'm, I'm just, and honestly, but the thing about it is, it is a factor we deal with. I think we have dealt with it well, and I think it's something we definitely have to consider as we're going forward, not necessarily pay parking, but how do, how do we manage our picture with that? We're talking about, as Councilwoman Millhaven mentioned a little earlier, and that is, we're in the process of creating a parking revenue stream at Westworld, you know, for large events. And I don't see where downtown is really that much different when you talk about special events, if that can work into a management program that might help in that distribution and that, the utilization, as you were referring to before. So thanks for the knowledge to get that in. Councilmember Cordy?
Thank you, Mayor. I think at the very least, we're not going to be able to bring together a citizen conversation around the bigger picture, although we should. We, I think that's down the road a little bit, but I think at the very least, we should look into the ingress of employees into our downtown and the impact of that on our parking in downtown. And if it is as significant that, if it is as significant as I believe it is, then some solutions around that specifically would be very helpful to our downtown merchants.
Any other questions? Team, do we have any other presentation or any other thoughts from you all? Or have you gotten, I see some significant amount of notes, so I'm presuming you got a bit of information from us. It'd be your job to piece that all together. I know neither, none of us at this table can probably even read what you've got down there, so it's for you to decipher back, and I am. But is there something else?
No, we've gotten a lot of good feedback, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Oh, I'm sorry, you're a little slow on that, so I...
I was just listening to what everyone said, and a stray thought wandered by, I thought I'd share it. If we're going to be doing a study on this and looking at our parking garages, where they are, trying to notify people where they are, doing that kind of signage, perhaps using our trolley system to some extent at the entrances to the garages, so that people can say, oh, there's a garage and there's a trolley. Maybe I'll park there, hop the trolley, and go where I need to go in downtown. It might be a connectivity of various modes like that that could be helpful. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we do not, I do not see any further questions or comments from the council members. Thank you again, gentlemen, very much for all the work coming into this and listening to us here. So with that, we have completed our items for the work study. We have no mayor and council items or anything else. So with that, I would want to thank everyone who's provided some input here today and being with us today. Thank you very much, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by aye.
Aye.